Good evening and welcome to the September 2012 regular meeting of the Bussaras State Schools Board of Education. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mrs. Stone, here. Mr. Schiefer?
Here.
Mr. Stone?
Here.
Dr. Johnson?
Here.
And Mr. Lipscomb and Mr. Jackson, and we have a new student representative.
Yes, Matt Music is our new student representative to the board, so we want to welcome Matt. And we look forward to your insight and your input in matters that we're deliberating on this evening and in the future. And I hope everybody realizes that everything we do is about students like Matt. Everything else is just an end to that means of making sure that we provide students like Matt and his peers with a quality education that will stand them in good stead. They go off into the future and represent Bussaras as well. So, welcome.
Thank you.
We have some other guests as well. Garian Methner is a student of mine at Bowling Green. He's an aspiring superintendent. Don't know why anybody would really want to aspire to that, but I want to welcome Garian. He's taking a class in Board Superintendent Relations, so he's going to be watching us have relations tonight. Be on your best behavior. With Matt, that didn't come out quite right. On to the next item. Approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the August 23rd, 2012 regular meeting?
So move.
Mrs. Stone, give her your second.
Second.
Mr. Schiefer, comments, corrections, discussions? Roll call.
Mrs. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Schiefer?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is the approval of the treasurer's financial report for August. Mrs. Jacobs, if you please.
In your packet tonight is your financial report. I think the biggest items, I do need an approval on the engagement letter for Perry and Associates. We anticipate that the auditors will be in-house on October 10th and 11th. So, they're actually coming in this year before the game is finished. So, they were anticipating the final audit report to be completed before the end of December. Also, at your place this evening, I put the final appropriations for fiscal year '15 as well as the anticipated revenues certificate as well. In the packet, there's also several budget and purpose clauses, and those are ready for approval for you. I think the biggest item for me to mention is the OSFC closeout. Woo-hoo, yes, it's finally done. Signed, fielded, and delivered from the State Facilities Commission. These adjustments, what's left from permanent improvement, I mean, there's adjustments to permanent improvement, the maintenance fund and the OSFC interest. There's a portion of principal that was left over from the local funded initiative. I did consult with our bond attorneys to determine what that additional funding could be used for, and he suggested that we either put it in permanent improvement or the maintenance fund. So, these are the final adjustments which will bring everything to zero. The item that I would like you to strike at the five-year forecast, I bet you wondered where that was. We decided to wait for the approval for that for October, since there are other items. I guess I wanted to make sure that we had our October count firmly under our belt before I projected any additional revenues.
Because that kind of drives revenues a bit.
Yes, it does, yes, it does. And I believe that that's the biggest items that I have on the financial report this evening.
Would there be a motion to approve the treasurer's financial report? Mr. Schiefer?
Second.
Second.
Mr. Stone, any discussion, questions, comments? So, in approving this motion, we're approving several resolutions that are in there.
Yes, within there, absolutely.
All right, you take the roll, please.
Mrs. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Schiefer?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Next, we have an addendum to this evening's agenda. I don't know if we have a hard copy of that, but it's on your disk drive or your flash drive. Basically, I believe, the addition is to approve a one-year limited contract that Diane Wagner is a kindergarten teacher effective October 1st at Masters Step 5, 2013. School year pending proper certification, background check, and so forth. Is that correct, Mr. Stone?
That's correct, and there is a substitute item being personnel. I believe there was one additional supplement on contract that was added to that that was not on the original agenda. And then, there was one additional supplement for the under personnel classified. So, we're going to substitute B under personnel certified and substitute D under personnel classified. And I believe there's hard copies at the table back here.
In the back.
Next to the press.
Okay, would there be a motion to approve the addenda to tonight's agenda?
So move.
Mr. Stone?
Support.
Mr. Schiefer, thank you. Discussion, questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Schiefer?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Next, we have committee reports, and we'll begin with legislative report from Mr. Stone.
Very briefly, the only major thing that I saw in the legislature was the fact that the governor signed the major overhaul to STRS, and I believe Kirst was involved in that as well. That is my report.
Thank you. Athletics, Mr. Schiefer?
Just a couple items. Next athletic council meeting will be this coming Monday, October 1st, at the high school at 5:30. Athletic boosters will have their meeting the following Monday, on the 8th, at 7:00 p.m. Something new that's coming back, that's pretty exciting, is elementary schools now going to be having pep rally again. It's been several years since we've had one, and I know they're pretty excited. And the first pep rally is tomorrow afternoon. 9th through 12th grade students, they're on the golf, cross-country, cheerleaders, football, volleyball, girls tennis, and the demo van will be released early to go to the elementary and have a, what should be a pretty exciting time for the kids at the elementary school. So, nice to see that come back. And last is reverse raffle, which everyone who participated, everyone got a mailing. Reverse raffle is going to be Saturday, November 3rd, and it's at the VFW Post, right up at Cross Creek Golf Course. Tickets again this year are $50, and the grand prize is $3,000. And if you need a ticket for yourself, your friend, family, or buy one for your dog, whomever, they're on sale presently, and you can see any of our coaches, our athletic director, Tom Jeffrey, or booster club president, Wayne Gold. So, participate by, 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 by. So, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Pioneer, Mrs. Stone?
It was pretty much business as usual this month. They did, two or three of the directors did give a real nice presentation on how they do their walkthroughs, their iPads and stuff. I don't know if you've seen any of them, but it's pretty sharp. I mean, they can get them done pretty quick, and it was really interesting to watch their presentation.
As far as student achievement is concerned, I noticed that yesterday the ODE did release, I don't know, is it the preliminary final or the final preliminary?
They're still calling it preliminary, that it could change, but it's the percentages of our, each of our indicators. They're OAAs and OJTs.
Didn't have a lot of additional data that we didn't already have on there. Now, is it my understanding that the full report cards will be released before the end of the calendar year?
They're waiting on the completion of the attendance audit by the state. And so, there was a couple factors that were not released. One was the attendance data, which our preliminary results show that we met that indicator. And they did not release the performance index score, which we're anticipating will go up for the fourth year in a row. And then, overall district rating and building ratings, they did not release. So, the only thing that was, they did release the, each of the individual percentages, and starting with third grade reading and mathematics. We were within the preliminary results, because we worked pretty hard making sure that all the kids are counted correctly. We were within a half a percent or a percent of each of those. We did pick up, initially, we didn't think we had gotten sixth grade math, but after further review, we did pick up that indicator. So, right now, we're looking at, we've hit 18 indicators, and that is, we believe, to be the most that we've hit since, out of 26. Still have work to go, but obviously, the staff has been working well, and improvements being shown in all those areas.
And so, basically, we have the data that we kind of need for our purposes anyway, correct?
Yeah, at this time, it's, you know, we'd like to verify the performance index score and then receive our overall rating, but for the most part, we have the information we need to make instructional decisions going forward.
Okay, wellness. Mr. Lipscomb is not here this evening, and have we assigned another board member to wellness yet or not? I don't know if we've done that yet. Okay.
We'd like to report that there is a wellness meeting tomorrow morning at 8:45 at the secondary building.
Build and Bell Tower, Mr. Stone, I don't know what more you know than I do, except there's a meeting scheduled. And I think we've got some preliminary estimates on some things that we're going to be taking a look at. But I think that means sometime the first part of October, isn't it?
Yeah, I believe they escaped me this morning.
All right.
Absolutely.
At the SOTOP last week, I would say that there appears to be a great deal of support and enthusiasm for the Bell Tower building project. And I think we can count on a lot of the folks of that era to be actively involved in that and seeing that that gets done.
And while we're on that topic, how did that go? It sounded like it really needed that.
It was, it was a great event. The folks really appreciated. Many times, I heard, "Well, thank you for opening your school to us." And I was quick to, I guess we'll say, correct them politely that, "No, this is your high school, and we're welcoming you. We're glad to have you back." And so, Mr. Kimmel's had some, we've had some preliminary conversations with Dr. Elder regarding the Bell Tower, but then also a high school Hall of Fame that they may like to see, I guess we'll say, return to that school. And one statement that really kind of drove it home to me is while they have, while we have a lot of athletic and academic recognitions at our secondary school, the wall of fame there begins with the 1970 year. And one of the folks said, "That's, that is concerning to us, because it's like we didn't exist." And we said, "Well, we are, we definitely know that you did, and we would like to work with you to, you know, recognize you." So, I look for us to have a lot of interest in that project.
It was very neat that they were able to come back with, obviously, there's been extensive renovation there, but to come back to that same gym, auditorium, and stage for that, for that.
Yes, and actually, with the renovation, the gym looked more like it did when they were there than, because the windows had been returned.
That's true.
And those were not there, you know, when the back gym was on. They did ask where the catwalk around the gym was, and it's like, "Well, that's been gone for about 25 years."
If you'd like to make a donation. Okay, thank you, Mr. Roll. And Matt? Anything you'd like to share?
Yes, I have a couple policies that I've asked the students about. But first, I would like to talk about the pep rally we just had. It was extremely energetic, and Coach Joseph actually wasn't in attendance there. He just retired here, what he taught for 32 years. And he said at the end of the assembly that it was the best pep rally that he's been a part of. So, coming from him, that was a great compliment. Our next assembly is October 3rd, and we'll, then we'll narrow down homecoming candidates. We'll attend to the pod candidates for homecoming coin, when our homecoming dance is October 13th. So, we'll know 10 days prior to that. For the first policy, I went around and interviewed 20 different students, ranging from freshman to senior. And I got, out of all the 20, I got 20 positives out of them. We all liked the cell phone policy. We've never really understood why we couldn't have our cell phones out during study hall, or during hallway time. So, that was a great change. But the food changes didn't go over so well. Out of the 20 that students that I asked, all 20 had negative reviews about the new food changes. Most of this comes down to the whole grain change. A lot of the whole grain bonds just don't taste as well, honestly. It's a little blonde, but that's what they said. And the proportions have gone down a little bit. A lot of students don't, don't think that $2.75 is really a fair price, but obviously, people are still paying less that aren't on reduced lunch. And the new fruit and vegetable thing, and a new rule is that you have to take a fruit or vegetable. And most of this food is getting wasted, and that could obviously contribute to the $2.75, which we don't think is necessarily fair. But if that much food is getting wasted, then yeah, we can kind of see why it's that high. And the third policy I addressed was the dress code. I, at least 20, it was about 10-10 for guys and girls. Most of the girls, stereotypically, just said they didn't understand what the new dress code was. I know I personally heard someone first week getting told they can't wear sweats, but I learned in the last week that you can wear sweats, so I know there's some confusion there. And then, for the guys on this, most of us just don't understand the shorts rule. I know it's not a new change, but a lot of guys have said they don't understand why it's a rule, and they believe more it's a rule to make a rule, not a rule to protect the safety. And on a more positive note, we had the first pair at the pool, which is a nationwide event, this Wednesday. It was the first one that's gone on since I've been in high school. And we did have eight students and a couple faculty members there. We didn't have the 55 students that went for it, had out, but we also weren't on a two-hour delay. And this was the first time they'd been doing it for years. So, I'm glad how that went, and it's, everything is going well. So, thank you for having me. That's my report.
Thank you very much, and could you share a little bit with us about your background, what your interests are, what your future plans are?
Right now, I'm in the football season. I'm a kid for the football team. For sports, I also play for singles for the tennis team. I'm in the National Honor Society and Science Club and Concert Band and X-Band, because I play drums for those. And then, after high school, I want to either go to Lubrin University or Indiana Wesleyan University to study worship music.
Thank you.
Yes, the next one, roll.
You know something, Matt? I know that getting used to whole grains is awful. Like, of course, no, seriously, if you can go back and tell a kid, "It is, it's terrible." When you get my age, that's what you do. And after a while, you get used to the whole wheat stuff and all that.
I think the point is they're not your age.
I know. I know, but I'm trying to put a positive spin on this a little bit. Thank you for saying that. I'm just trying to help out.
Well, we appreciate your input and your perspective, and we'll certainly take those things into consideration. So, thank you very much. Okay. Next on the agenda is the superintendent's report.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Music for your very thorough report. I would say, in two years we've been doing that, that's been the most thorough report. So, I appreciate you getting how-talking to the students and giving some feelers out there on the policy changes and recommendations, and that's what we're looking for out of this position. And I know that you and Mr. Henderson had spoke this week or last week prior to the meeting, and that's the type of feedback we're looking for. So, you brought up the food service piece, and Mr. Schuster's journalism class, I believe there's a couple students are doing, started out doing a story. It may come in, I, from an outside look, it may turn into a series of stories. I don't know, they're coming up with several layers of questions, and it was, Mrs. Jacobs and I went over to the secondary building about a week ago or so, and got asked some additional questions, and that drew into more additional questions. And I think the better that I think our students can understand the number of hurdles that Lori Pennington and our food service departments had to go through because of the new regulations coming down, the better I think our students will understand why it is the way it is. Because it's not because Sedexo or Bussaras Food Service decided that they're going to make policy changes. The changes have been forced down upon, and we're trying to deal with them the best we can as we go through them. So, I think that, I look forward to those student written reports. I know that they even came over and got a copy of the Sedexo proposal, because we just went out to bid this past summer, and it's about a 75 or 100-page document, or maybe more.
More.
250 pages. So, I'm looking forward to that, that, those stories, and hopefully, we can share those student newspapers when they, when they come out. Do you know when those were printed, first round?
We're nearly finished with the ones, so hopefully, it finishes. I'll have it this weekend to look over.
Okay, sounds good. We'll get those passed out to the board at our next meeting, so appreciate your report. Last night, we got an opportunity to go to the OSBA Regional Fall Conference, and Lori Pennington and the Backpack Program was awarded, an outstanding program award last night. It's great to receive regional recognition, and that Backpack Program will also be at your plate. Those of you that weren't able to be there last night, I did bring home a flyer, a program from the event. And they're also going to be recognized at the Capitol Conference in November at the state level. So, I appreciate all the work that Lori and her committee has done. I believe that the report is 100 backpacks plus going out tomorrow.
Of course, serving 105 students and 100 backpacks.
And I just really want to encourage, the community has really got behind it also this weekend. Saturday night, the Crawford County Young Professionals is doing an event called Pack the Park. And the mission to that is to bring a food item to, for the support of the Bussaras Backpack Program. I believe we're also receiving a financial donation tomorrow night from Fireland's Credit Union.
Saturday night.
Saturday night.
Yeah, from Fireland.
And Fireland's Credit Union, actually, I believe, is also on the donation, or accepted a donation later in the agenda for some school supplies for the elementary that occurred earlier in the year. So, the community's really getting behind events like the Backpack Program. We really appreciate that partnership. That ends, concludes my report.
I did notice, I don't know if Lori was going to give a report, but in her report, I noticed that the free and reduced lunch rate this year, is it 70%?
That's still from last year.
That's still from last year?
I won't have a, really a good number until the end of next week, because tomorrow is the cutoff. If they have not turned in an application by tomorrow, the carryover from last year will end. So, and I usually, we have about 28 students that are still on temporary status, which is, I think, the best we've ever had.
Okay. Opportunity to address the board. Is there anyone that would like to address the board regarding any agenda items that we're about to deliberate upon? Okay. Personnel, certified staff, agenda items, Mr. Kimmel?
Dr. Johnson, it's my recommendation, Board of Education, approved items A through F, and F is off the addendum, A through F under personnel, certified staff.
Okay, would there be a motion?
So move.
Mrs. Stone, thank you. Second.
Second.
Mr. Schiefer? Discussion, questions, comments about any of those items? Hearing none, Mrs. Jacobs, if you call the roll.
Mrs. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Schiefer?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Kimmel, next item is personnel, classified staff.
Dr. Johnson, it's my recommendation, the Board of Education, approved items A through F under personnel, classified staff.
Would there be a motion to approve those items under personnel, classified staff?
So move.
Mr. Stone, thank you. Second. Mr. Schiefer? Discussion, questions, comments about any of those items? Seeing none? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Schiefer?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Next would be business items. Mr. Kimmel?
Dr. Johnson, it's my recommendation, the Board of Education, approved items A through F under the business section of the agenda.
Would there be a motion to approve the business items?
So move.
Mrs. Stone, thank you. Second.
Support.
Mr. Stone, thank you. Questions, comments, concerns about the business items?
I think we just thank everybody who made those donations under.
Yes.
Very generous.
Absolutely. Why don't we take a moment, and, Mr. Kimmel, would you mind reading those, because there are some significant ones?
Not a problem. The Bussaras State School District Staff Scholarship had a contribution of $131.50 from its employees. The elementary backpack program received an estimated $1,000 donation, backpacks with grade-level supplies, also from the, or from the Fireland Federal Credit Union and ESCO Bussaras Blades. The Bussaras Elementary School received an estimated donation of $116 from the Dollar General for school supplies. The Bussaras Walmart donated 20 $50 cards, so a $1,000 donation, to the elementary staff for a teacher rewards program. And the elementary PTO, which I know a lot of times makes donations that are made, and we don't catch them even at the board office, because they do so much for our kids and for our staff. But at the same time, Walmart made the $1,000 donation. The elementary PTO made another $600 donation for additional gift cards for the elementary, for staff for materials and supplies.
Again, we thank those individuals and groups for those very generous donations. Any other comments? Mrs. Jacobs? Roll call.
Mrs. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Schiefer?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Discussion items, Mr. Kimmel?
Yes, the first one, we, every year, we tweak the acceptable use policy, and you should have received at your desk tonight, if you guys can accept the use policy, or it was emailed to you. I'll just point out the items and then make sure you get copies of it. The only changes is the addition to allowing students to bring an external hard drive to the, to the, to the building. What we ask students to do is to get those devices checked in at the library level to make sure that they can hook up to a public network in our buildings. So, if students want to access Wi-Fi, they can do that. And Mr. Henderson is going to probably be communicating to the students what they can do to get their devices checked. Once they get checked, they'll get a tag stating that it's not carrying viruses, and it can be okay to hook to the, to the, to the network. And they will, once that password and login, or username and login is entered into that device, they will no longer have to put that in every time they walk into the building. It'll be, it'll automatically hook up to the Wi-Fi. So, that's something above and beyond the public Wi-Fi, because students are going to be activated every day, and it gets to be frustrating for both staff and students to have to log in every time they bring their device into the, into the building. So, that, the new changes address that policy change. And then, there's also some literature, some updated comments with regards to the appointing the licensed software that Brian could probably provide a little bit better explanation for, but it's just keeping up with our new administrative guidelines. And talks about the federal government. And talks about the federal government, uh, allowing, um, sell your cards or laptops. A lot of the changes have to do with the increased, uh, availability of bringing your own device into the, uh, into the, into the school, and I believe that is it. The sign-off page on the acceptable use policy, uh, allowed, uh, some additional information about, uh, parents, uh, giving their email address to school, so we can communicate, uh, with the, with the parents email-wise, which our School Connects program, that we make the calls for delays, cancellations, school announcements, uh, we can also send out email, and I know that, uh, because I actually put my email address in for the elementary, since both my kids go there, and Mr. Rule's last announcement, I not, I not only got the voice message, but I had an email come across at the same time, so it was, that's pretty, 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 pretty useful. So, we're asking for the parents to provide the, uh, their email address, is the last change on the acceptable use policy.
Very good. Any discussion, uh, comments about those changes? I think, uh, I know there's always issues with internet access, especially when it comes to minors, but I think anything we can do to increase, uh, access and ease of access for students and staff is a very positive thing. Is that something you're, I'm sorry? Is that something you're seeking action on tonight, or?
Um, the sooner we can get it board-approved, the sooner we can get it posted to the website and allow, um, both, uh, students and staff to be able to sign an updated and accurate acceptable use policy.
That's what would be the pleasure of the board. Do you want to, a month to look at that and review it, or are you comfortable in, uh, taking action on that?
With the minor changes, I can see, I mean, there's a, there's a complete overhaul there.
Okay, then I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Mr. Stone, thank you. Second?
Support.
Mr. Schiefer? Thank you. Roll call?
Mrs. Stone?
Any, for any other, any other discussion before we call?
Mrs. Stone? Yes. Mr. Schiefer?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, the next item, uh, is comments from the board president. Obviously, I'm not Tony. Uh, Tony was unable to be here this evening, but he did email me, um, a letter that he would like me to, uh, read, and it stated September twenty-seventh, two thousand and twelve, addressed to Kevin Kimmel, Superintendent Bizarres City Schools. Dear Mr. Kimmel and Bizarres Board of Education, nine years ago, I was appointed to the Board of Education, filling the vacated seat of the newly-elected mayor, Dan Ross. At that time, I was not aware of the commitment or the countless hours Boards of Education members put in each month to serve their community. However, after several, after serving for a few years, I decided to become more involved in education by serving as a professional in the classroom, teaching high school mathematics. The experience on the board and in the classroom has had a profound impact on my life and my desire to teach and mentor students through high school. Three years ago, I started my teaching career at Marion City Schools, and I thought I would stay in the district for a long time. This summer, I was presented with an offer to teach geometry and algebra II at Streetsboro High School just north of Akron, Ohio. Initially, I planned to make the commute daily to Streetsboro. After several weeks of daily three-hour drives and rising gas prices, I quickly realized that my original plan may need to be revised. Due to these changes, my time in the district has been limited, and I am no longer able to fulfill my duties on the Bizarres Board of Education. Therefore, I wish to submit my resignation to the Bizarres Board of Education effective October first, two thousand and twelve. Based on my working history with the current board, I am sure that they will be diligent in finding a suitable replacement to help guide this district and make sure Bizarres City Schools is the district of choice in Crawford County. Should you or any member of the press have any questions regarding this resignation, please feel free to contact me anytime at four one nine five six nine three zero nine one. Thank you for the opportunity to serve, uh, this district and the community. Go Redmond. Sincerely, Stephen A. Tony Lipscombe. So, we have before us a letter of resignation from, uh, Mr. Lipscombe. Um, I think it would be appropriate this time to entertain a motion to accept, uh, that letter of resignation.
I, uh, would reluctantly move to accept.
Mr. Schiefer? Would you second?
I'll second.
Second, Mrs. Stone? Uh, comments?
Well, as I recall, how Tony became a member of the board, only the three of us here know exactly the details, but, uh, um, Tony was appointed to the board as, when Dan Ross became mayor, um, and Tony's been a, a very, very loyal member to the board, um, to the superintendents, and he's sort of worked with them, and, uh, supported, and, uh, he's a good friend, and, uh, he's gonna be missed, but, uh, as he said, we will find a, a suitable replacement for him, and, uh, we'll move forward, so.
And I had the unique opportunity to serve as a superintendent and a board member with Tony, and always appreciated his, uh, insight and perspective and his loyalty, uh, to the district, and, and I'm sure you all join me in certainly extending an invitation for him to continue to be involved in whatever way that he can with the district, and hopefully we can get him back here to a board meeting and say some nice things to him.
I certainly wish him well with his new endeavor at Streetsboro. I hope things go well for him. Tony was, it, you know, he's gonna be missed, he really is, because he always had this perspective that nobody else would think of. We thought, we think, "Okay, well, we've got it," and then all of a sudden, it's like, you know, he'd come up, so it's like, "Yeah," you know, he just never thought of it in that direction, so, that, that type of thinking, he, he's gonna be missed, we're gonna miss him.
He would always bring a level of positivity, I think, to him. Absolutely. It's really, oftentimes, from what we deal with, very much needed, and very much appreciated. I know, just, with Knight being here, he was always so open to talk and make sure I understood what was going on, and I appreciate that, so.
Okay, if there are any further comments, um, roll call, please.
Mrs. Stone? Yes. Mr. Schiefer?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes. Uh, the next section is communications. I'm not aware of any, Mr. Kimmel, unless you have some? Okay. Uh, anybody have any announcements this time? Okay. Uh, we will be, uh, adjourning to executive session. For members of the press, we anticipate no action to follow. Um, would there be, uh, a motion to be sent to executive session at this time?
So moved.
Mr. Stone, thanks.
Support.
Mr. Schiefer, thank you. Roll call?
Mr. Stone? Yes. Mr. Schiefer?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes. We're adjourning to executive session. Thank you very much.